Good evening, everyone. This is our meeting of January 13th, 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Cruz. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman Prochin.
Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
We have a call room.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, we had some unfortunate news towards the end of December in the city. Former retired police chief Edward Rittenhour passed away on December 27th, and we also had a Board of Review member Larry Snyder who passed away on December 23rd. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for these two individuals. Thank you very much. We will go straight into our communications for this evening. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employer, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employer, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future should it be warranted. Each speaker will have three minutes. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones and have respect for all speakers. Our first speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening, Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident, and Happy New Year. I'm here actually tonight to ask two questions. Where is Southfield? Since 2016, I've come here to see how this council and this collective body could help your residents with sewer and septic line connections. In recent years, in recent months, we've had communities that have come here with concerns about their basements backing up with raw sewage. Where is Southfield? Recently, we've had a municipality just right next door within recent weeks receive $345 million to help their residents with sewer and backups. That same municipality just recently received $45 million specifically for septic and sewer lines. When I contacted that company and that city, they indicated that that $45 million was for free inspections, repairs, and replacements of their sewer lines. Where is Southfield when it comes to getting these monies to help and support your residents with sewer line connections that we've already long proven the city fumbled the ball in with residents with their connections? We know that the city fumbled the ball with that recent community that showed up after the infrastructure repairs were done, that now every time it rains, their basements flood with raw sewage. Where is Southfield in this madness? When municipalities right next door can secure funds from the same local officials that represent this city? How does that make sense when this city and your communities have been asking for help for this since 2016? Please make that make sense. I will wait. We have to do more about this infrastructure. You know what snow does? It melts. So your residents, their basements, are still flooding with raw sewage. Where is Southfield with this? When do we get elected officials to roll up their sleeves and argue and fight for us with our government to secure these benefits for our residents? Where is Southfield?
Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
How you doing? Keith Harris, having been here in a while. I love what Stacy just said, where is Southfield? Now, you know, I'm here today to talk about the Southfield Lethbridge Dem Club. We asked Joe Person's the same question. You know what Joe Person said? "We don't deal with local issues." Ain't that amazing? We don't deal with local issues. We just get people elected. Don't he know that elections are local? How stupid can the man be? You know, I am so sick and tired of this Democratic Party in this city who has failed us over and over and over again. And I am pushing for a complete dismantlement of the Southfield Lethbridge Dem Club. I want to see a dem club coming to this city that's going to work for the city. I want to, I ask the same question. Where are we in Southfield? We have, this man run, he's over the dem club, the chair. He's over the Black Caucus. We haven't never had a Black Caucus meeting in years, four or five years. The meeting is to talk about the issues of this meeting, of this city, where black people can go there and release and talk and mobilize. But Joe Person's ain't short on running his mouth when he tell people he the head negro in charge. He ain't short on running his mouth when he say the mayor and the city manager come to him when they want their dirty work done. Now, I'm personally fed up, and I said the same thing Saturday at the 12th district meeting, and I'll say the same thing tomorrow in front of Brenda Lawrence. We want this dismantled in Southfield. This issue with the septic tanks is a local issue. We need to mobilize on it. Right there, we look at our charter committee. It's, I call it the Moses Committee. Everybody on that committee is over 65, close to 70. How progressive is that? Joe should have been involved in the charter committee, asking the same questions that I am asking. It is time out on letting this council make stupid decisions. And we are going to get a maintenance agreement in that charter committee. Anything over $250,000, we want to go to the union. We're tired of companies like Contour coming into this city, destroying this city, not giving our union work to union workers. Joe Person's failed us. Joe Person's will be removed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Garland McWilliams.
Happy New Year, everyone. Hopefully, this year will be a better year than last year. My main concern is our Southfield roads. I've been here a few times in talking about the roads. Mount Vernon and the streets that connect to it, they're shameful to Southfield. My first, the first time I brought the issue up, I had pictures, and the people that developed the pictures said, where are these pictures from? You know, pavement was all torn up, potholes every place, and I said, that's, that's Southfield. And they, they were taken back, you know? What are they doing there? What aren't they doing there? Just before the Christmas holiday, I was here, and I brought the same concern, especially about Mount Vernon, and I was told that there are plans for the west side of Southfield, between Southfield and Northwestern Highway, to be done. But there are no plans for the east side of Southfield. Who makes the plans? Who decides who gets what? The whole subdivision on the other side of Southfield was rebuilt, basically. I know you had to put some sewer pipes in and everything. And I drive through there, and I see all the side streets have been repaved. I see a lot of work been done over there, but on my side of Southfield, there's nothing done. There's a few, you know, they did a little bit last summer. They passed up a few areas. They did some repairs on my block and a couple other blocks and left it there, and then some blacktop was, was put in, and it was very poorly put in with some of these potholes that are like six inches deep and everything. I just wanted to see a plan, a plan for Mount Vernon and the connecting streets, and it's overdue. I get tired of, you know, coming up here, talking about the same issue about the streets. You know, there's a lot of other issues too, but this is, this is an issue that has to be resolved. Anytime I have to continually put air in my tires because they hit a pothole or something, you know, my wife has to do the same thing, you know, there's something wrong, and it looks, it looks horrible, and it should be better. I think Southfield could do a much better job than it's been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. You can start.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident, Happy New Year. At the end of last year, we were talking about the septic tanks and what it says when you get a notice from the city, which I gave to highlight, which did not have the words in it "fix and repair" in place. It only had that if you fail to obtain a certificate, you shall be required to connect to a public sewer, which does not eliminate you or makes you have to connect to something that's not there. It doesn't say the people that don't have one don't have to connect to it. This language needs to be changed. This is why a person receives a ticket for a street that does not have a sewer line on it. And stop, please, saying stuff that's not there and me having to come here and prove it. The papers that y'all received now were the Freedom of Information Act, since you were talked about, told about that a couple weeks ago. Well, at the bottom of it, you'll see where I highlighted, it says, forward the original part to the clerk, and then the FOIA coordinator will pass it out. So when you get something from the clerk's office, that's a FOIA, and asking questions like, where was that money spent on them lawsuits? That's why you got it. And then it says, please provide me a copy of public records. It don't say nothing about talking to me. It don't say nothing about speaking to me. You can either show it to me before you send it to me, or send it to me. But speaking to me, and if you're speaking to me, I'm going to tell you, I want it in writing. Since I've gotten everything else in writing, that should have been submitted to me in writing, and there is a tim limit on that in which you have to give it to me. Our senator, our representative, our U.S. Rep., all of them seem to care about the people in the city of Southfield. Problem I don't understand is, how come y'all don't? Sewer line should have been fixed and repaired. Should have been one put in for people. Shouldn't be homes backing up. Shouldn't be when a new project for SNRI is put in, residents are put out of place and no way to leave out of their neighborhood easy and accessible. Questions that we, I ask about them should be given to me. Everything else has been given to me and been given to me on your letterhead and documented and signed. I do not expect to receive anything any further. I have not received that in the past 20 years when I've asked for FOIAs. So why all of a sudden, when I ask about money?
Your time is up.
You want to talk?
That concludes our communications. I will, at this point, just make a comment to Mr. McWilliams. I know you've been here before. We've talked about Mount Vernon, how that is currently in the design phase. We hope to go out for bidding in March, bring it back to the city council in April or May to start working on that this year. The city, on our website, under construction plans and under the engineering, does have a map of every street in the city that has been worked on. It also has a map of the jurisdictions. Not every street in the city is under Southfield's jurisdiction. Some of the major roads, like 10 Mile, 8 Mile, 12 Mile, even though there has been work on those by the county, some, with some participation from the city. But the city works on a pacer rating. They look at streets and their, how, how much is going to hold up? How well is holding up? How much longer can it hold up versus, does it need to be repaired right now, or can it wait another year or two? Because as we all know, road money is few and far between, and the city is doing its best it can with all the money that we have for, for road funding. The city has over 200 miles of road. In the last 10 years, the city has actually repaired or replaced over 50% of all the city's roads. And we continue an aggressive schedule. We've already approved several projects for this year on the south side of the city towards near 8 Mile, near the Providence Hospital, but it's always spread out throughout the city. And I'd like to remind everyone, because I get the same complaints in my neighborhood as well, that the city is 26 square miles, and, you know, when, when you're driving in your neighborhood, you're familiar with your streets. And I encourage everyone to drive all 200 miles of the city. There's a lot of roads in the city that are, that need to be repaired, need to be replaced, but we're always only familiar with our neighborhood and our city, and that's why we have a comprehensive plan that looks at the entire city and tries to stretch our dollars as best we can, whether they're federal grants, state grants, money from the county, from, or money that we have budgeted in our city budget. So, but all that information is available on our website. Thank you. All right. We will now move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is our consent agenda. However, prior, yep, consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Counsel, do you have any items that you wish pulled for further discussion? All right? Yes?
I hope that we approved consent and then I made a resolution for open county law jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, B authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement between open county and the city of Southfield regarding the MIDC standard seven review and qualification requirements for the MIDC grant contract compliance. C, receive and file Public Act 202 of 2017, Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act, the annual report for 2024. D, the city of Southfield Neighborhood and Information Center branded community promotional merchandise and giveaways. And E, set public hearing date for February 24th, 2025, to consider the L. Carl Roche redevelopment, Brownfield redevelopment plan and tax incremental financing plan and development and reimbursement agreement.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve consent agenda items A through E as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have items to be discussed and, and/or to take action on. Our first item is the acceptance of grant funding for the 2425 DTE Energy Foundation tree planting grant.
Thank you, Council President. This is a annual grant program, the DTE Energy Foundation. It's a $4,000 max award with an equal match. We have applied for and been awarded this multiple years in a row because we have an active tree planting program. Once again, council gave us permission to apply for this grant earlier, I believe, before the end of 2024. We were awarded it. The award letter is in your packet, and we're going to match the $4,000 award with $4,000 from the city's tree fund, so we will get $8,000 additional trees planted. We are targeting those along the new stretch of the nine-mile trail constructed this year between Plum Hollow and Prescott, which is, on this map would be that black section sort of to the left. And these are just showing the other trail segments that are either approved or are in the works in terms of grant applications. And we do have a recommended resolution accepting this grant so that we can receive the funds and then in the spring do the plantings.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Planner, what about the trees that we had to take up right outside here because of the underground pipe? Are we, do we have any plans yet to replace those trees?
My understanding is that we're looking to maybe get some design work done to figure out a new landscaping for that area because we can't plant trees back on top of the pipeline.
On top, right.
So I think we're looking to do kind of a design for that front lawn area.
Okay.
And then probably go for some additional tree funding next year.
Okay.
For other sources to, to implement that.
Okay.
That is what Planner Crood had indicated to me, the discussion was to get maybe a little more comprehensive look at that front landscaping and then.
That makes sense.
Do something a little more thoughtful, based on what's there now, but also the plans to have that grand walkway that goes across and the other things that are planned for that front yard.
Okay.
And to tie it to the, the Middle Point project across the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel on this item? All right? If not, I will accept a motion.
I move that we accept the grant funding for 2425 from DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to accept the acceptance of grant funding for the 2425 DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have authorization to accept a 2425 Detroit Institute of Art Partners in Public Art project.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. This is the planning department working with the Southfield Public Arts Commission. Came to the council, asked for permission to apply to this program through the DIA. They call it an award rather than a grant because this is actually paid for out of the millage that we all pay to support the DIA. So as a participating community, they're working with communities on this. The award provides up to $20,000 for a public art installation. The only obligation on the city's part was to provide a location on public property for the mural and to do maintenance for a minimum of 10 years. And the Public Arts Fund does have money set aside for art maintenance, so that is where we withdraw on that if need be. There is, they encourage things like lighting and landscaping by the murals, but they're not required. That would be, I think, something we'd look to maybe layer in there. The proposed location at this time is on the ice arena, on the west wall, right to the, to the right of the entrance. So if you look on, sorry, this, this shows it better, the red star is the location, and then the photo is of the wall. And I do have a slide that the DIA provided us of other murals they've done under this program in other communities, just for examples. And they run this program. They'll engage an artist, come up with some conceptual designs, go out to the public and get feedback on those, refine them further, and then they actually fund the actual installation of the art. So.
Does council have any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve and accept the 202425 DIA Partners in Public Health Project, the PIPA, and accept the, is it a donation of the grant? And the PIPAFONS will support the design and installation of the artwork to be planted on public property or right away owned by the city of Southfield.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to authorize the acceptance of the 2425 DIA Partners in Public Art Project. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposed lot split at 29355 Northwestern Highway.
Thank you, Council President. This is a, another authority of council that doesn't come up regularly, but when someone applies for a lot split and one of the lots would be landlocked, would not have frontage on a public road, there has to be an access easement provided to the, the rear property. And if the access easement being provided is less than 60 feet wide, that requires approval by the council. So here we have the property in question, owned by Ariel Enterprises. It is a property with two office buildings on it, a larger one in the rear and a smaller one toward the front. They're looking to split the property so that each building is on its own parcel. As you can see here, the current zoning of the property is B3 except for a little bit of P parking kind of in the bottom corner, and it is master plan for regional mixed use. Some photos of the site, these are from the front looking in, so you see the smaller office building on the right on the top photo is the one that'll be in its separate parcel in the front. The left is actually a bank that was actually, used to be part of this property that was split off a few years ago, and then the bank was built, is my understanding. And this is just, the lower photo is just looking into that entrance. That driveway you see kind of behind that island is the ease, access easement area. This is a couple of photos looking from one end of the access easement and from the other end, just showing that aisle that would be the access area. This is just the existing site survey where it's all one parcel with the two buildings. And then this just kind of emphasizing that red dotted line is where the new property line will be, basically. That is the one that's going to divide that parcel in two. So just to be clear, like, that's the new parcel line that would be created that would separate the two pieces. And then on this one, you can see, it's harder to see on the easement, or the, on the survey, but that red dotted line is the easement, and then it's a little easier on the right image, kind of showing where that easement runs and provides access to that rear, proposed rear parcel by a 25-foot access easement. We did have this reviewed by, you know, the police, fire, building, planning, all the engineering, all of the usual departments that do site plan review. And with the easement in place and the easement agreement draft that was provided with the lot split application, there were no concerns that the property wouldn't function. That easement agreement would then make the property function as it had. That easement agreement would then make the property function as it has always functioned, basically. Just that it allows each building to be on its own parcel for purposes of either sale or financing. And I believe the owner, the representative is here, if they could come forward if there's any questions.
If you can please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ari Lebowitz. My office address is 29355 Northwestern Highway. And I'm residing in the back building where this proposal is being made.
Do you have anything to add?
Yes, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Just to give you some historical, is, we originally did the same thing with regards to the parcel where the Comerica Bank is. And we demolished that particular building at a time, which used to be a jewelry store, if any of you remember. And we obviously redeveloped it to be what we consider a very nice branch bank. And we hope to do something similar in the future and upgrade the property by redeveloping the front into something other than a D-class office building.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
To the planner, the, the property to the
West?
Is it going towards 12 Mile? That at one time was going to be developed for, I believe, a golf?
Oh, yeah, with some kind of indoor golf driving range, I believe.
Correct. I know nothing has been developed on that property. This wouldn't affect anything with that parcel, would it, the slot split?
No, it would have no impact on that parcel. That parcel gets all of its access from the south.
The south, because I thought it, I thought with the, I'll just call it the golf plan. I can't remember what it was called. There was some access going towards Northwestern Highway. But that may have been just a discussion. Do you remember that or no?
That would have been before I was working with the city, but that would have required agreement of one of the other property owners in order to permit that connection across their land.
Okay.
I, I don't recall, there was no, everything was going to be from 12 Mile for that plan that has since fallen apart.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the proposed lot split of 29355 Northwestern Highway with an access easement of 25 feet in width conditioned upon the execution of the split per the survey and easement document to be submitted with the request.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to approve the lot split at 29355 with all the stipulations as presented. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, and then our last item for discussion is a 12-month extension to commence construction at the Northland Storage ODD project at 16025 Northland Drive.
Thank you, Council President. This is another one of the council's authorities that isn't driven by public hearings. It's, in this case, an ODD that was previously approved in early 2023 for the former AT&amp;T building for self-storage renovation. Is, would be in February, coming up against its limit, its normal time expiration to commence construction. The person who got that approval is in negotiations for selling it to someone who, to an entity that actually does develop self-storage and would be doing that per the plan. But the entity purchasing wants the extension in place to make sure their land entitlements won't expire before they have a chance to get the project underway. I know we do have someone here from the property, representing the property owner to discuss. So it is a 12-month extension that is at council's discretion. Just to, is the site. And I included a few things from the approved plans, just to refresh everybody's memory as to what was approved. So this is the overall site plan. As you can see, the AT&amp;T building is on the north half of the property. And then the south half of the property where the property lot is, is like a phase two, which could have various concepts, had either hotel or multi-tenant retail and some other B3 uses. All of the perimeter developments, the sidewalks, landscaping, that's all part of phase one along with the self-storage. So you can see, here's the phasing plan that was approved. So the blue is all phase one. So that's all the kind of public facing improvements plus the self-storage. Phase two would then be an infill development. We had to get site plan approval later for the details. See if I can get, here we go. These were some of the renderings that were presented as part of the ODD approval, showing the self-storage building and also like either a multi-tenant commercial building or a hotel on the phase two part of the site. And here's some of the streetscape elements. There's a couple of little pedestrian plazas that are proposed as part of the development. And one at each of the corners, 8 Mile and then up on Northland Drive, or, yeah, Northland Drive. And I believe there's someone here to represent this request, if you have any further questions. They did provide a letter sort of explaining why this is taking longer than anticipated.
If you can just give your name and address, please?
Of course, Hunter Galworth of Design House Architecture, 3300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan.
Can you, can you speak up, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Hunter Galworth with Design House Architecture, 3300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. I'm just here to answer any additional questions you have. Like Tom stated, there's been issues with, with getting the property sold at this time, vandalism and just some other funding and issues that have extended the timeline to get it sold. The buyers are actually with me here tonight and there's, our intent is to have this, have the closing within the next month or two and then have permits applied for the following month.
Counsel, do you have any, any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the 12-month extension for the commencement of construction for the Northland Storage ODD project.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the 12-month extension for the Northland Storage ODD, which was PZR ODD 23-0001. Any other questions? All those in favor? Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, may to the petitioner. Is there a plan to remove the barbed wire fence along 8 Mile?
Yes.
And what is that plan?
You're talking about removing that fence? So as part of the phasing plan, all that surrounding?
Could you speak up a little louder?
Yeah, so as part of the phasing plan, all that surrounding landscaping and sidewalk improvements that surround the site, that'll be part of that improvement, so.
That would have to be completed prior to then to getting a C of O for phase one.
It's very unattractive and actually it doesn't meet current city code. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move on to ordinances to enact. Councilwoman Hoag?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance 1802. The request to rezonate 1.1 acres of land at the north end of Bush Street on the east side of the street.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to enact ordinance number 1802. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I move that we enact ordinance 1803. Request to amend the approved rezoning for 29777 Telegraph.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1803. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance 1804. Request of John Grace Arms to amend the approved residential unit development district.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1804. Any questions? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Dan Brightwell on his attendance at the NLC convention.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the travel expense for Councilman Brightwell to attend the National League of Cities Convention in November of 2024. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Before we get to council comments, I just want to give a shout out to two of our council members. First is to our Councilwoman Hoag, who has been appointed to the Municipal Services Committee at the Michigan Municipal League. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And also to Councilwoman Hicks, who has also been appointed to the Michigan Municipal League Finance Committee. So congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
All right. Council comments, we will start with Councilman Brightwell. All right, Councilwoman Haynes?
Just real quick, this week is coming up for jazz and blues at the library, the Southfield Public Library. And also, next Monday, we'll be celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King in the peace walk. And I just wanted to make a statement in light of all that is going on in the world, that it would just be nice and good if we start with peace here in our own home front. And that can begin with good conversation and good relationships and how we present ourselves when we speak with others and when we talk with others. A man died for something that he believed in and a dream still lives. And it lives in those of us who pursue it. Martin Luther King was, most importantly, a Christian who believed in what God believed in. And his words said that as much as possible, be at peace among each other. And that means respect, even in regards to what we say about each other and how we treat each other. And I hope that in this year, in 2025, with all that's going on in the world, that we could at least here in our city begin with peace and respect and show respect. Because what Dr. Martin Luther King believed in was supporting the race, the human race. And that means all of us. And I hope that we can not forget that everybody can't march that day, but we can walk amongst each other the other 364 days and live as much as possible with peace with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks?
Good evening, Southfield. I want to just take a moment to give my condolences to the family of past President Jimmy Carter. Growing up, he was the first president that I could understand what his role was. You know, as I watched the commentary related to the funeral, I paused and appreciated the civility between past President Bush and past President Obama, that despite their ideologies, their parties, they were civil to each other. And I think that's something that we need to take notice of and reenact as we enter into a new season of presidential administration. I also want to give my condolences to all those who've lost their homes and some who've lost their lives in those brush fires in California. And a more positive note, I'm a proud member of a Black Reek Letter organization, Cap Alpha Society Fraternity Incorporated. Councilwoman Hoag is a member of Alpha, Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated. There are three other historically Black fraternities and sororities who celebrate the founding of their organizations. Why that's important in Southfield? One, because there's a lot of members of those respective organizations within our city. And despite the colors and the organizations, one thing that we stand firmly in alliance with is giving back to community and service. And so I just want to give acknowledgement to those organizations and thank them for the service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and healthy New Year. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. And I'm available if you ever need to get in contact with me. For 2025, let's all work together and respect all the people in Southfield. And that includes all the diversity that makes Southfield the great city that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everyone. I'll just say I echo everything that our colleagues have said, every last one of them. So no need for me to repeat it, but just to echo and support it even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I do want to wish everyone a happy 2025. We have a lot on our agenda. We're going to get done as a council and for the betterment of Southfield. I also want to just put out some public service announcements. You know, I want to also thank the, our Public Works Department. They were out this weekend, Saturday, Sunday, Friday night, making sure that our streets were safe and passable. I did receive several compliments that they, they got to the residential streets fairly quickly. And you could barely tell that they snowed because of the plowing and salting. It made it for a much better commute within the city. So thank you to our DPW crews for that. But also to remind everyone that there's a new law in Michigan that you must stay 200 feet behind a snowplow. They cannot always see you depending on the weather conditions. They have bright green lights that are flashing on top. So please be mindful, stay 200 feet back. We don't want anything to happen to your car, your windshield. We want everyone to be safe. Those trucks are basically a big chunk of steel and your plastic car will not hold up should it crash into it. So please be careful. Also, with school buses, there was a new law that was signed in that is going to be implemented in the next year or two, that you can receive a ticket if a school bus is stopped and has its stop sign out. They were going to be fitting those school buses with cameras. And if your car passes it while it is, the stop sign is out, the arm is out, you can get a ticket. You should be stopping without the fear of a ticket because there are students who are trying to either cross a street or just get off of the bus safely. But keep in mind that this is something new in our, in our state. So please be mindful for those students. Also, the last announcement is something that I have been asking for that finally came to fruition with our Southfield library is they have a new library app that you don't have to worry about keeping your library card on your keychain, in your wallet, in your pocket. You can download the app. It's available for both Apple and Android. And you can pull up your library card from your phone. You can check out books. You can essentially access everything you need to through this new app. So I encourage everyone to download it. I know for me, it's a lot easier than always fumbling for my ID when I'm trying to check out books. But again, thank you very much. Happy New Year to everyone and looking forward to a great year. Mr. Mayor?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator? Okay. Madam Attorney?
Wow. I want to just say Happy New Year to everyone and look forward to working with you all. Be safe as you're outside driving.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Same here, my sentiments exactly. Happy New Year, have a blessed and happy New Year. I wish that our residents just continue to live a profound life in Southfield and go go Detroit language.
All right. Mr. Planner, anything to add?
Just a couple of items. We are working on our Planning Commission Annual Report. That's working on that with the Planning Commission this month, so it'll become the team next month. And then we are working also on the capital plan, and that's going to be in front of the Planning Commission in February, assuming in March. Things to go with.
Thank you. Mr. Building Official, anything to add?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, anything else to come before us? This meeting is adjourned.